Hi, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May the 7th, 2019, and you are here live from City Hall in Athens, GA. Hope everybody's doing well this evening. If business is not concluded by 8:15, there will be a 15-minute break. We are going to begin our evening tonight with a roll call from the clerk.
Davenport.
President.
Parker.
Here.
Link.
Here.
Wright.
Present.
Denson.
Here.
Neesmith.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Harrod.
Present.
Thornton.
Here.
Handy.
Here.
And we have a court.
Perfect, all right. Everyone present accounted for. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the meetings on April 2nd, April 15th, April 16th, and April 23rd.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Neesmith, a second from Commissioner Harrod. All in favor of approval of those minutes?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, hearing none, minutes are approved. Clerk Spratlin, do we have written communications tonight?
For entering to the record, we have notification of right-of-way acceptance of Streets in Creekside Manor, Phase 2.
All right, thank you. We have several opportunities for citizen input tonight. We're going to have an opportunity in just a moment for input on the consent agenda that will be followed later by opportunity on the old and new business items, and then separately, we'll have citizen input on each of the planning and zoning items toward the end of our evening. And then at the conclusion of the evening, we have general citizen input for three minutes on any item not on the agenda tonight. So, beginning with citizen input on our consent agenda, that is items numbers 1 through 5, please come up, state your name and address on items 1 through 5, and give us any input that you would like on those items.
Is that supposed to be T-SPOS proposal for the...
No, that'll be old and new business. 1 through 5. Seeing there's citizen input on those items, does any commissioner wish to remove one of those consent agenda items from the consent agenda?
I'm just curious, is number 1 coming off? Is, I believe, is that the Chase Street sidewalk gap?
So, I need to make a formal request of the clerk that we remove number 1 from the agenda.
Okay.
And so, item number 1, Clerk Spratlin, we are going to remove from the agenda. Nobody wishes to remove an item? I'd entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda items numbers 2 through 5.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Parker, a second from Commissioner Denson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. We do have a separate public hearing on item number 6, which is a proposed roadway abandonment for about 169 feet at the dead end of Overlook Drive, and so I'd ask if the public would like to come make a comment on this item. No interest in the road abandonment, same as it ever was. So entertain a motion regarding item number 6.
District.
District.
I believe that's Commissioner Davenport.
I want you to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, a second from Commissioner Wright. Any discussion? All in favor of abandonment?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, perfect. All right, so now is the time when we have citizen input on old and new business. So that is items number 7 through 10, and this includes the T-SPOS West Broad area. Again, please read your name and address into the record, and you'll have three minutes. When you have 30 seconds remaining, you'll see the light turn yellow, and then when your time is up, the light will turn red. Come on down.
Hi, my name is Johanna Gardner. I live at 972 Waddell Street. I have lived there for over 10 years. We own our house, we love our community. The Safer Streets Initiative is really important to us. We really do want to improve our neighborhood because we love it and we live there. This is a lot of money, and it can go a long way. And we're really excited about improving our neighborhood, but I'm not sure if what is actually on the table is going to be the best fit for our neighborhood. Years ago, when this conversation was started, there was a ton of community involvement, like a ton. We went to all of those meetings, everyone was excited. A couple of sidewalks were built, and then like it sort of dropped off the map. Now that it's picked back up, I just don't think that anybody knows. That's why nobody's talking about it, like nobody knows about it. I'm asking that we split up the roundabout and the sidewalks into two separate issues and put a hold on them until we can actually have real community involvement, because I do think that we deserve the right to help decide what happens in our neighborhood. I am biased, I have mentioned before that this sidewalk will take out our hedges, a tree, flower beds, and part of my garden, but I also just don't think that it's the fix for making our neighborhood safer. We need, we need speed bumps, and we need streetlights, and we need stop signs. Like cars come through our neighborhood really, really quickly. I think that we need to work on curbing the cars and how fast they're going, as opposed to just putting in a sidewalk. I think that, yeah, if our goal is to make our streets safer, I think that we need to actually look at what is the most affordable and best way to do that, and not just a quick fix. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gardner. Any other citizens interested in speaking to old and new business? That's items 7 through 10.
Yes, my name is Sean Wesley, and I reside at 972 Waddell Street, and I'm discussing, or I'm here to talk about both, I guess, the roundabout issue and the sidewalk, I guess because it's proposed project concept number 2, which there were several concepts several years ago, and there were budgetary constraints, so Minor Street and Hills Chapel had sidewalks were added that the community embraced. The church really liked the sidewalks, I think everybody did. And I guess there was new T-SPOS funding that came along, and, you know, I guess there was a meeting that didn't know about, and about 42 citizens, I guess we've kind of been over this, that the last meeting, I apologize for reiterating it, but there were lots of concerns about pedestrian safety, about speeding, and about arresting a lot of the high-speed traffic. And I think that one of the designs that was latched onto for some reason was this project, which it is very expensive, it's going to take a lot of right-of-way, there's going to be lots of excavation and concrete walls and barriers to be installed. And I think there's, I mean, today, in this past week, I went and discussed with my neighbors, none of them knew anything about this, and a couple of my neighbors, a neighbor at 861 Waddell Street, their yard is eight feet to the curb, so for six feet of a, you know, retaining wall and five feet of a street, they would have, you know, that turns two feet of their yard. And another family has, they have, they're going to lose a dogwood, they're going to lose their rose bushes and a fence, and that family I talked to said that they'd talked to the city in the past about getting speed bumps. A lot of people I talked to really liked that idea of speed bumps, and there's a couple intersections, they talked about having four-way stops to slow down the traffic. And they said in the past that when they came to the city, the city said, "Well, you're going to have to put up half the money, or we don't have the money." I feel like a lot of the community would prefer to have speed bumps than having to lose a lot of their yards for the sidewalk. So that is, I appreciate you all taking this consideration. I know there's a meeting next week, community meeting, to talk about it at the Rock Springs Center, and I really much appreciate you all taking a pause for that. The other concern I have is with the roundabout. I know that it's a very big project, and it's just in the, just being started to be begun, but I don't like the idea personally of cutting the plaza out of access. I use the plaza a lot for cycling, for walking, for driving. I know people will talk about access to the hospital, and limiting that as a roadway can be detrimental in that aspect, but personally, I know that the origins of the roundabout were to, I think, to allow for accessibility for pedestrian traffic, and I walk across that road every morning, walk my dogs about 6:30 in the morning, and there's no traffic then, but about 7:15, you can't pass it. I think that the study, I know it raised really gung-ho, but I don't know if that's the best method to work for pedestrian safety, and I think that should be a priority in the roundabout, is of course to slow down people, because there are several accidents that happen, there are deadly accidents historically in that interchange, but I would personally like to have the plaza still remain and to have a really great pedestrian access. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Other input on old and new business, items number 7 through 10.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissions members. My name is Charlie Maddox, I live at 115 Avalon Drive. I'm a member of the Hill Chapel Baptist Church for the last 64 years, and this came as a kind of surprise to us about that I was told that there was a meeting held at my church, and I attended the meeting, but that was not a conversation that I guess I missed or what. And then I talked to some friends that live on Plaza Street who were totally unaware of the possibility of closing the street, and then we also received some information about Athens Housing Authority property that jets out there, and all three of these things, you know, bring a grave concern, especially when the citizens that are really affected by that, I don't see where their input was, you know, given, maybe they just didn't show up, but whatever the reason may be, I think it needs to go back to the drawing board, because for Hill Chapel members, and I talked out past, I don't represent him, but he was surprised about the roundabout. And when we think about the traffic, we've got two or three lights there, we've got crossing there, and all of these things, roundabout, if we just look at the traffic going up and down that street, it's really going to be a problem, but to close Plaza Street off and the business that's been there forever, and some of these things, I think we need some serious community input on that. So that's, that's my objection. Don't really have my dog in the fight, but my friends from Hill Chapel, that's in the mix, so we're really concerned about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maddox. Other input on old and new business tonight?
Hi, my name is Chris Dowd, I live at 188 Northview Drive. I want to speak about the roundabout. I definitely support the idea of having community input on it for sure, and I think it is still on the drawing board stage. It's just whether or not we want to move that forward and keep, keep it on the drawing board and keep drawing new lines and so forth. And I think it should stay on the drawing board to talk about it, have more community input, maybe do some tweaking, but since, I mean, I heard that it will reduce traffic delays by 80%. Did I get that right? That's kind of amazing. And I think it'll make, it will make it a lot safer to cross the street, because right now, there's no crosswalks there. I've actually tried to cross the street there one time, it was a long time ago, but, and I was not able to. I never had that experience before, and I had to completely change my plans for the day. But anyway, yes, what's really dangerous, roundabouts are safer, it'll speed traffic up, and I think we need to consider, keep considering it, but move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Other citizen input on old and new business, items 7 through 10.
Hi, my name is Michael Songster, I live at 1450 West Hancock Avenue, and I'd like to say that I generally am in favor of the notion of the roundabout, but I am not in favor of closing the plaza. Hancock Avenue is my front yard, Glenhaven Avenue is my backyard, there are about 12 of us that live on Hancock Avenue where that's the case, and all of the diverted traffic that would be cut off from the plaza would likely end up either on Glenhaven or Hancock. Before the work session meeting, I knew that there was, you know, very, very, very vague talk about the notion of a roundabout, but no one on our side of Broad Street had really any inkling that it had even gotten this far. The meeting at Hills Chapel was never advertised on our side of Broad, we never had the opportunity to weigh in on this, and so at the very, very least, I think that there needs to be time where people who are going to be directly affected have the opportunity to, you know, voice their concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Songster. Other citizen input on old and new business, items 7 through 10. All right, seeing that everyone is at peace, we are going to move on to item number 7 for commission conversation, and as members of the public and certainly commissioners may have noted, there are a couple of prospective commission-defined options. I know there's been some subsequent conversation. Be happy for anybody to kick off the dialogue tonight. Mr. Link?
Yeah, this is in my district, and this is kind of a monster agenda item. I would argue that there are essentially seven different projects on this agenda item. You know, I'd consider that Waddell Street project to essentially be three different projects, because there are multiple segments to that, that street that may or may not need sidewalks, and my argument is, there really needs to be, you know, much more input and much more analysis of this neighborhood before we move forward with any of these projects. And I want to thank Commissioners Wright and Neesmith. You know, I was out of commission for a couple of weeks recovering from surgery, and they brought forth a commission-defined option that addressed some of the concerns regarding Waddell Street, but I feel like there are many concerns regarding other portions of this agenda item, specifically the roundabout, and specifically the need for some traffic studies to gather some data. I feel like we have no business really moving forward with spending this T-SPOS money until we have some comprehensive data about traffic in the neighborhood, speeds, volume, and I feel like we really need to go back to the table with our neighborhood traffic management program and consider things like setbacks and street widths and, you know, come up with some new criteria, so that a neighborhood like this can qualify for speed bumps. There was a community input meeting, but that input meeting, the word did not get out specifically to the people on the other side of Broad, and also to many people in the Rock Springs side of Broad. So there is another community input meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. So since that's been scheduled, I'd like to just go ahead and propose that we put this entire agenda item on hold, so that input can be gathered, and I would ask that staff bring these items back as separate agenda items, so we can deliberate on them one by one, rather than having this big pileup, and it's just, the conversation just gets confusing when we're talking about this many items. So I'd like to move that we go ahead and put this on hold.
I second it. All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Link, a second from Commissioner Neesmith to hold this item. I'm just going to ask Manager Williams to provide any general input on, on the series of proposed actions that were embodied in this item.
Just a couple of points. So GDOT will not make a determination as to whether or not they're going to fund this project until June, and so I would recommend that we maybe not get everybody involved conversation until we get that waypoint, and then we need to agree on a process going forward, which would include more citizen involvement. With respect to the Waddell sidewalks, if we were to go and analyze, and I know you're not voting on that CDO right now, but I just want to be clear as we, because it's important for staff to have some direction on where to go going forward, to analyze the data, Commissioner, that you asked for, we would do that within the confines of the existing mayor and commission policy. And what I mean by that is, streetlights are mostly vehicular in nature and not pedestrian, and so before we go through all that work, maybe there's a policy discussion that needs to be had.
I agree.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to say that.
Commissioner Thornton?
You know, I have the advantage, being new, and always can say, I'm new and don't know what's going on, but I think that is one of, one of the glitches that I see. Everything kind of gets hung up on policy, and maybe, and I'm agreeing with you, that we need to look at our policies. Commissioner Davenport was the first person that spoke out against this, and I had no clue, and now I'm hearing from committee people who also don't have no clue, but if you're saying that we got to look at the policy, what are you, what is your recommendation? We're going to have a community meeting, what did you say, next Tuesday? So what, what, what comes first? The community meeting, the policy, or do they work together? Tell me that.
So I may not know about the community meeting, though.
There's a community meeting at Rock Springs Community Center on Tuesday, the 12th, from 5:30 to 7:30, and it was just announced like Thursday or Friday, I believe.
Okay, okay. So, no, we should continue to have as many conversations as we can, so that folks are more aware and can spread the word. And Commissioner, there's a number of things that the mayor and commission have voted on, and in some cases, there's been CDOs to craft specific parameters for some of our, what we do. And as staff, we can't selectively, we're not hiding behind policy, we're just saying we're going to go by the policy, because that's what staff is supposed to do. And so I think where Commissioner Link was heading, based on some discussions in the work session, was pedestrian lighting as a safety alternative, but that's not the way the current policy for street lighting, as approved by mayor and commission, is written. So we could go do a lot of work, but if we follow the policy, it's not going to come out where I think you're wanting to get to. And so it's not about one commissioner, it's about a majority of commissioners, and so if you give us some direction on what you'd like to see, that's, I think we should have that conversation before any, a lot of work starts.
So, would it be easier for you or someone from your staff to bring us up to date and maybe send us a copy of the policy?
So, as a matter, we were just talking about this, at the June work session, we're going to have a conversation about the streetlights and the utility, and we can have a conversation about the policy then. We can send something out in advance.
I definitely would like, even if we changed the policy, I would like to see what we're changing too, or what, what mayor and commissioner did in the past.
Yeah.
To give me some historical background, but I think, I think every policy should be clear that people who are impacted by our decisions, there's a clear, there's clear dialogue that folks should be involved in every policy. So we should not have people coming to us and they don't know what's going on. I admit I don't know what's going on, but if it's going to impact their neighborhood, so if you would just, I would appreciate just a copy of the policy, I'll look forward to the conversation in June, and I'll see you next Tuesday.
The streetlight policy?
Whatever policy that impacts these recommendations.
Okay.
Whatever policies that impact this recommend, all of, she said they were bundled, were like kind of all together, so whatever you have that impacts the recommendation to the commission.
So as it pertains to where I think Commissioner Link wanted to go, there's really three policies. There's the streetlight policy, which we talked about. There's the neighborhood traffic management program, which prioritizes how we use those resources for what conditions, and then there's the very kind of thick federal manual and uniform traffic control devices, which only governs a four-way stop. So there's several things that intersect there that would influence our recommendations if we're going to follow those things.
I guess, and another thing, so the roundabout, is that being dictated by state funding? Is that what?
So, so GDOT has a program where they will put some funding towards safety improvements on what they call their system, and West Broad is, 78 is on their system. And so we initially reached out to them to try to clean up that intersection, that's been a conversation going on for years, and between our, our staff and consultants and their engineers, you've got this latest design. And so they are going to consider, with the data that was provided from the study, traffic study that was done, if that warrants funding. It's going to be several million dollars to, or more, to do that project, and we have some T-SPOS funding in that area that we could help offer, say, 25% of the funding. If they don't, if they offer only partial or no funding at all, we probably won't be able to complete the project, and it would be a moot point. So like many things, you know, you're bringing an idea forward in evolution, certainly they're a vital partner, and we need to hear what their response to all this is in early June.
So are you saying that this was their only recommendation, was the roundabout? There were no other recommendations for safety on that area?
Well, this, this is one that, that certainly appears to score high marks with the traffic data, as, you know, safety and congestion, and also going along with pedestrian safety improvements. You know, this sort of seemed to fit a lot of, check a lot of boxes, so.
Okay.
It doesn't mean it's, it's the only thing we can do.
And that was my question. Are you saying that this was the only recommendation, or this is like what we think was the best recommendation? Did they offer any other options?
It's, so it's a, it's an intersection, it's a wide intersection that has multiple roads coming in at weird geometric angles, so it kind of lends itself to, we looked at a roundabout some years ago and didn't think it would work, and now with a second look at it, we think it will. I'm not sure, other than, you know, you'd have to, you'd have to go way back up Hancock to try to, and go through some houses to get it to come in more neatly, you know, so when you have these multiple, it's a messy intersection.
So just with the fact that you're, you know, you're having to break this down to me to elementary, like, like elementary kindergarten, I think it's so important that we go back, do everything you said, make sure that we're looking at all the data from the past, and make sure that there are not other options that would be more. So it sounds like we're almost going back to scratch, maybe, but I hope not, but I'm totally, totally not supportive until I can hear the data and get the past history.
Sure.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to hold item number 7. My anticipation is that would be a month hold at this point. Is that what you are seeking, Commissioner Link?
Well, at least a month, but, you know, I really, really want to urge staff to bring these back as separate agenda items, so when we do discuss them, we're not going back and forth, skipping around. I mean, the agenda setting session was really confusing, because nobody knew who was talking about what project, so I want to urge that staff bring these back as separate projects.
Okay.
I would suggest that we, we leave it up to staff as to when they bring it back and what order they bring it back in, and I agree with Melissa, it needs to be broken up, and staff has a lot of work to do, so let's, let's let them, I suggest we let them decide what the timing is.
All right, so, Mr. Denson?
I guess I have a little bit concerned about, because it seems like the Magnolia Street sidewalk, there isn't much issue there, so I would, I would, I guess I'm a little concerned that it could be delayed. I don't know. I would like that to come up for a vote, because it feels like that doesn't have issues here. I'd almost be willing to vote on that item tonight, if everybody was okay with it, separate from everything else, if that was possible.
Commissioner Harrod?
Mr. Manager, is GDOT on any timeframe?
Not, not that I'm aware of. I mean, they're, they want to keep moving it forward, but 30, 60 days isn't going to make a big difference, I don't think. They obviously want to know that we're serious. And just to qualify that, we would seek to fund Magnolia out of the sidewalk portion of the sploes. I think that was a question that came up earlier.
Yeah, that was.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, that was my concern, because this Magnolia sidewalk was approved, I don't know what, a year or more ago, and I was under the impression that there was, you know, an existing pot of money that that was going to fund that. I didn't realize that we would be dipping into T-SPOS money for it. So that's my concern with the Magnolia sidewalk, and, you know, just quite frankly, I'd rather just put the whole thing on hold, so we can assure that when the community has this input, they're able to talk about them as separate items, and everybody knows, you know, what's being discussed and what the possibilities are. You know, 30 days on, on any one of these segments, I don't think is going to make a big difference.
So if the, if the motion on the floor stands, and if you're comfortable, I'm certainly happy to bring back these in component pieces, given that Magnolia already has some wind in its sails, so to speak, and we could see that in the very near term, I could bring that back next month.
Okay.
All right, so motion stands on the floor, Commissioner Link has made the motion. Commissioner Link has made the motion, Commissioner Neesmith has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to item number eight. Uh, item number eight is our recently discussed expanded assigned vehicle program for Athens-Clark County Police Department officers. And, uh, this is something that's embedded in the next fiscal year's budget, but we're pre-funding for the remainder of this fiscal year. Commissioner Harrod?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Madam Mayor. Mister Mayor.
I take what I can get. It gets in that, it gets in that brain and it stays there.
I've served under two Madam Mayors, so that's why it's there. Thank you, Mister Mayor. So obviously, uh, this relates to taking, allowing police officers to take vehicles who live out of the county vehicles home. This addresses one of the major issues that came out of the police morale study, which was that our current policy does not allow that to happen. The item in front of us places a geographic limit on, um, would allow, um, critical responders and general sworn personnel who live outside the county to take vehicles home, but there is a geographical limit placed on this. I've had a conversation with the manager. If we were to simply get rid of any geographical limitation and allow all critical incident responders and general sworn personnel to take police cars home, um, that live outside the county, that would add to this budget item, or to this item here, um, about $35,000 from your email. So I would like to suggest that we approve this, um, but allow all critical incident responders and all general sworn personnel who live outside the county to be able to take vehicles home.
I'll second that.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Harrod, a second from Commissioner Wright, input from Commissioner Neesmith?
Yeah, I'm certainly, uh, in favor of this concept. I'm a little concerned about some unattended, unintended consequences, which I may be just imagining, but perhaps we should limit it to our immediately surrounding counties. And Andy, what do you think?
I mean, I, I think that this was such a big issue for our offices, that, that still creates a two-tier system, and I think we're, it's a relatively small amount of money, and I think we should just go ahead and do it.
Okay, perhaps I would suggest that we monitor this and see if there is any officers who are putting an inordinate amount of miles on their cars because they live outside of our surrounding counties and then, and then go from there. And I certainly agree, I mean, I've had lots of conversations with police officers about this, especially since we put it on the table, um, and, and they're very excited about it. Uh, the command staff's excited about it because they believe, according to what I hear from them, that this will improve, improve morale, uh, fairly significant, and, significantly. And for us, it's, it's not a big thing financially, and I think the benefits, it also is, is a force multiplier, because the officers are able to respond to calls to and from work because they're in a police vehicle. Which means they don't have to drive to the police station and pick up their vehicle to respond to a call, so I think it does improve public safety a little bit, so I, I'll support this.
Any other commission input? Commissioner Parker?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I, uh, I appreciate the amount of data that's been brought forward for comparing practices in other counties and sort of doing a data-driven approach to putting this together, as well as bringing in some of the input from our officers in their surveys about what has been affecting their morale issues. But I, I also think that, you know, we were, we started out doing these programs both as, um, a way of kind of keeping up with standard best practice in other communities, but also, um, to incentivize people living in the county, which I still believe is a really important quality of, of the service that we provide to people in terms of public safety, that folks who are, who are responding to their calls understand some of the community dynamics that exist there as a, as a, as a factor or benefit of living there. And so, I'm concerned that if we continue in a somewhat piecemeal fashion of extending incentives to officers who choose to live in the county, that thereby creating a sense of decreased morale in those who do not, we could kind of get trapped in a cycle of doing this over and over again, over a long period of time. And so I just wanted to ask, uh, the manager and you, uh, Mister Mayor, if you care to chime in, do we have plans for some other kind of incentive program for people to choose to live in Athens if they are a part of the force here, or has, is this fairly neutralizing one of the stronger benefit programs we do have?
Well, I think there's, there's theory and then what we've experienced.
Yeah.
And I think Mayor Dentson and the mayor and commissioner at the time did create a resident stipend, residency stipend, which was augmented, I think, in the last budget year. And as you've seen in the morale study, that seemed to drive somewhat of a wedge in the police department, in that, uh, the police officers that lived outside the county felt like that they were just as dedicated as those inside. And as you know, um, Mayor Dentson's strong conviction was, well, you don't have to take advantage of it if you don't want to. But be that as it may, that did cause, and is still causing some, some divisiveness within the police department. The take-home vehicle program, a longstanding opposition to that on the mayor and commission, because of that very notion that we want people to live in here. Uh, it doesn't seem to have appreciably incentivized folks to move here, and like most of the workforce here, about half live in Athens-Clark County and half live in the surrounding county. So, I, I agree wholeheartedly with your, your sentiment, and for various reasons, whether it's spouses or, uh, you know, family land or whatever, a good many, at least half of our officers live outside the county, and, um, so I understand your point clearly.
Thank you.
Maybe the only other note that I'd make is more of an anecdotal one, and it's based on my experience in a similar pay scale profession, public education, where, where for some of the reasons that Manager Williams mentioned, and sometimes just sheer economics, people live elsewhere, it's relatively more expensive to have a home here in Athens-Clark than it is in some of our surrounding counties, and certainly there's less stock right now. And so I think that's sort of driven the necessity of maintenance of homes, home places outside of Athens-Clark for some. So I, I think it's a market force as well.
So, I feel like what I'm hearing is an incentive approach to increasing, um, community, well, how should I phrase this? Uh, the, the number of officers that live in the county is something we may be moving away from, as it hasn't been seen to appreciably help in these two instances. Okay.
And, and maybe the kind of further follow-up would be to say that, I think for kind of middle-class, modest-wage working professionals, generally, everything we can do to make homeownership more attainable in Athens-Clark benefits us here as well. Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, the other comment I wanted to make was that, um, in a very challenging profession, I think that we're also trying to make it as, and, do our best to recruit and maintain the workforce that our, our police department. And I think that this is helping that, when we did think, I mean, I genuinely was surprised and didn't realize that that would become a divisive thing. Um, and I think that we do also understand that the affordable housing isn't, is, is kind of a wide range, and their, and their salary range affects that. And if we can get good, quality recruits, and then policemen, and then keep them without the divisiveness that we, was unintentional with when we started, and I guess we're just correcting that, because we don't wanna go back on what we started and make it a, make it a team and not a morale issue. I, I mean, that's, it's a tough spot, but I think we've heard enough that this solution should help in, in the retaining and recruiting as well.
Commissioner Davenport?
Um, I just want a motion that we move forward on this. I accept Commissioner Harrod idea amendment to increase it to all police officer.
I believe there's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Harrod, second from Commissioner Wright. Is that correct? Okay. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I know that our police forces had a, had a really hard time recruiting and retaining officers, and I'm just throwing this out there, you know, I hope we can focus our recruitment efforts on folks who actually live and grew up here, because I feel like they're the kind of folks who would be more likely to remain living in Athens-Clark County, um, you know? And I, I feel like, you know, we have some youth development programs, or we could come up with some youth development programs that could help put kids on that track towards law enforcement and public safety in general, cause we have the same issue going on at the jail with our deputies, um, so.
Firefighters.
Yeah, exactly. So, maybe we can get creative with some youth development programs, especially in some of our anti-poverty initiatives, and, you know, get some of these kids on that track early on.
Yep.
Any other input from commissioners? Ordnance?
In order to amend the FY 2019 annual operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for operating expenses related to expanding the assigned vehicle program for the police department and for other purposes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes, we're expanding the program to all sworn officers. All right, uh, item number nine is a review of the board authority and commission's handbook, which went a couple rounds through government operations, I believe, from Mr. Harrod.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So yeah, so we've talked about this on, on a few occasions, um, one of the, it came through government ops, uh, one of the purposes of this was really to, uh, give a lot of, of people who are applying for positions on our boards, authorities, and, uh, commissions a, a better idea of exactly what some of them do. Um, and, um, so, I think there's a lot of details that I won't go into. I think one of the things, though, that I would like to point out, cause I do think it's really important in terms of, um, making our community more inclusive, is that there was a sense on the committee that whereas previously we had, um, required people that serve on our boards, or, and authorities, and commissions to be registered voters, that we've kind of switched that to, um, which of course implies that then they have to be citizens, uh, we've switched this to really to encourage residents of the county, which obviously does not require them to be citizens, cause, especially since we have a major university here, we have lots of people who didn't grow up here, and I'm one of them.
Ain't from around here, are you?
I ain't from around here, that's right. Um, so that's one thing that I wanted to point out. So with that, I will move that we, um, adopt the new boards, authorities, and commission handbook.
I second. All right, have a motion from Commissioner Harrod, a second from Commissioner Davenport, discussion from Commissioner Link?
Yeah, um, I just have a, a concern, which, I don't recall this coming up in this, um, handbook at all, but I've recently been made aware that some of our board and commission members are being asked to sign a waiver, um, that allows ACC government to, um, request any and all information pertaining to their driving record. And I had a brief conversation with the attorney just before the meeting and asked him to look into that, and if that's an actual requirement, um, you know, I just don't understand why that would be necessary. And, and so I've, I've asked the attorney to, to, um, let us know more about that, and why, why it would be necessary for any particular board.
I don't believe there's anything regarding a driving record embedded in this document, though.
No, there isn't, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to bring it up and, and ask the attorney to, to figure it out.
All right, there's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Rules of commission change.
Uh, there's a rules of commission change, is that embedded in this?
Uh, resolution.
Resolution.
I would ask it, I would like to ask a question about that particular one. So, so for example, huh, I'm on the economic development authority, state enabling legislation, and, and the downtown development authority, and the pension board. All, all of those seem to be state-enabling legislation, so this, actually, good enough. I guess it just matters.
Doesn't apply to commissioners who are on this board of the.
State.
Enabling legislation.
Okay. Well, it's another question, too, you know, certainly some citizens that may be, uh, on several different authorities, um, like Classics Center Authority or Housing Authority, those are also state-enabling, so that wouldn't apply to them as well, I would imagine.
And, plus this is a rule of the commission, and the mayor and commission can vote to suspend the rules.
Okay.
So it's not locked in stone.
Okay. And we also appoint people that are on these boards and authorities, so at some point, if we, if we decide that we really have a, have a situation where we need, need some folks on an authority, then we could change that as well.
Yes, there's a way to do that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Hamby. All right, and, uh, speaking of appointments, uh, item number 10 is a new slate of appointments to some of our boards, authorities, and commissions, and I'd entertain a motion for acceptance of the slate that should be at your place in front of you.
So moved.
All right, there's a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and so, uh, with approval, I will read the slate who have been approved for, uh, work on the boards, authorities, and commissions as follows. Diane Napier will be serving a four-year term on the airport authority. Jack Crowley and Jennifer Zorn will be serving four-year terms on the Classics Center Authority. Rebecca Bacon will be serving a three-year term on the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Region Two Advisory Board. Carrie Puco and Stephen Jacques will be serving on the hearings board for four-year terms. And Alice Kinman and Joey Tucker will be serving five-year terms on the planning commission. Congratulations to all of them, and thank you for your interest in serving. We now have come to our planning and zoning portion of the evening. We'll have individual input on each planning and zoning item in front of us. Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Clerk Spratlin, did we have anyone sign up for the eight-minute segment?
We have one on, uh.
Eight minutes, or ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten-minute segment, okay, on item number 12. Okay? So, uh, first planning and zoning item, item number 11, uh, request of the Smith Planning Group regarding, uh, several parcels, uh, on Sunset, Millard, and Hawthorne Avenue. Uh, so anyone who would like to speak to this item?
Mr. Smith, sorry, Jennifer. Yes. Yes. Mr. Smith, sorry. Yes.
And this is item number?
Eleven.
This is number 11. Okay. Uh, so, uh, there is a, a 10-minute, uh, advanced citizen request from Allison Smith, so if Allison Smith would first come to the podium for the 10-minute period.
Hi, my name is Allison Smith, and I live, um, at 110 Crestview Circle in Normal Town. And, um, I'm here today to simply, um, express my concern about this project in regards to, um, the existing design and how that could potentially have long-term impacts in our RSA district, and, um, as well as a variety of other issues in conformance with comprehensive plan and other documents. But currently, of the 642 parcels that are combined zoning of RS5 PD, zero of those have been previously RSA'd. So, this decision is going to set a precedent for the RSA district by upzoning to RS5 PD. And so I just wanna make sure that everyone's aware of this decision, how it could impact the rest of the RSA district in the future with the, the way that the design is currently. And, so, there's a, a variety of issues with, and I, and I will have to say that, um, the developer and, and the consultant have been open to my suggestions about pedestrian access, and, and that's really my ultimate goal here, is to make sure that we all are following, um, the plans that we spend so much time creating for our city and our county. And we just had a comprehensive plan update, and the comprehensive plan is not just the future development map. It is all of the goals, community needs, objectives that are outlined, and I feel that it's really important to consider those, especially when we are setting this precedent, because the decision we made today is gonna set them in new standards, that anyone in the future can come forth and say that they wanna have RS5 PD in our residential district. And so, with that, I would just like to go through, um, a few things in terms of, many of these things were actually outlined in the staff, um, recommendations, um, when they denied the, the zoning and future land use, um, in terms of, well, obviously the zoning criteria for, for type one applications, um, simply meeting the comprehensive plan in all of its elements, not just the map. Plan development should be located on a street having a minimum functional classification of a collector. Um, this development is the possible creation of an isolated district unrelated to adjacent and nearby districts. A variety of other reasons here in terms of economic value. I'm not necessarily going to get into the, um, whole affordability and workforce housing that's outlined in the developers', um, by. that's outlined in the developer's binding document, because I think that, we all know that unfortunately in Normal Town, new development that is of this size would not be considered affordable to the majority of Athens. So, there are these things. In addition, there's also nonconformance with Chapter 914, just plan development district. The intent of the district is to provide compatible land use on a scale larger than that of individual parcels. It also shall not, again, not be normally located on a street with a functional classification of collector. It is meant to include all the permitted uses in the underlying district, which that is not currently the case with the RSA, as well as the residential density should be compatible with the normal neighborhood as well as the underlying district. Again, that's not happening. The developer states in his binding document that this will provide transitional zoning. All of this gets to the fact that there, while there is a proposed pedestrian easement, that does not provide transitional zoning, because the pedestrian easement leads to nowhere. It does not connect. So, while I think that that's great, it just simply doesn't connect. There's a lot of incompatibility with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Obviously, infill housing should be concentrated near areas of commercial nodes and provide easy access to that. Additionally, the Neighborhood Needs Assessment on page 33 says promote inner and interconnectivity between neighborhoods while discouraging cul-de-sac development. This applies to both vehicular and pedestrian pathways. It may not always require formal paved improvements when associated with walkability. Additionally, environmental, support the latest Greenway Network Plan through land use and transportation initiatives. The Greenway Network Plan states in their transportation that active transportation corridors that support walking and biking provide much-needed options for driving, and their action includes to facilitate convenient access between neighborhoods and nearby destinations. And so, all of this kind of gets back to, do we want to approve something that, in theory, and while stated on paper, that it conforms to the Comprehensive Plan and it provides community-oriented design, it's actually an insular design that does not address the outside community at all. And again, I am totally for this type of development. I am absolutely a proponent of dense urban residential development that meets all of our community needs and supports all of our community planning efforts. And, again, so, in addition to all of that, I will say that there are some other things that I could technically address, while I don't really feel that I want to get into the legal aspect of some of this in terms of what could be considered things such as spot zoning. What I really feel is that if the developer would just simply explore some alternatives for that pedestrian access that is currently proposed, there are some alternatives that could be explored, especially since he does own the commercial parcel where that pedestrian easement is proposed, and he's been in, working with the adjacent commercial owner, which he's going to purchase a small portion of, to get this development. And so, I feel that if we could perhaps explore some of these issues, see some alternatives, then this would be a great development and a great addition to the community. But right now, I just, I feel that it's a little bit inclusive, and it's not trying to be affordable, it's not trying to provide access, and it essentially is creating a cul-de-sac that's going to take a mile to get to Hawthorne, where if there was access, it would take 400 feet. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Other input on item number 11?
Thank you, Mayor Gertz, Commissioners. My name is Bob Smith with Smith Planning Group, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight presenting the Tingle family, and Matt Tingle is with me here tonight. This is a small project, but it's an important project, and it's a good project. Although only seven homes, this is an example of how a modest density increase can be achieved without upsetting the character and pattern of a neighborhood. It increases housing diversity within their neighborhood by introducing an alternative to large lot, private yards, as required by the ordinance. It also sets the table for future pedestrian connectivity to Hawthorne Avenue, something we can do. We can't provide a complete connection right now, it's not in our control. And finally, it sets a framework and model for an ordinance that, should you want to see similar projects in the future, without the need to go through the plan development process, which, as you know, is very long, very expensive, particularly for just seven small homes. It's been a pleasure working with some of you during this process, but most of all, it's been a pleasure working with the Normal Town community. Their contributions during the design process have made this project better, and I respectfully ask for your vote of approval tonight, and I thank you in advance should you choose to do so. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Additional input on item number 11?
Good evening. My name is Adrian Sewell. I live at 410 Millard Avenue. When I look at the proposed rezoning and all the exemptions that have been requested, I can't help but ask myself why this needs to happen. I've listened and read the arguments in favor of the proposal, and honestly, they don't seem to add up to much of anything but continuing the gentrification that has been occurring in our neighborhood. I honestly have a lot of questions, and hope you will consider these questions as you decide whether or not this is right for Athens. The developer says that this will create workforce housing. And what workforce is he talking about? The developer has made every effort to avoid stating a price for these proposed homes. He has stated they would be priced to scale of the other newly-built homes in the neighborhood. Looking at those homes and the square footage proposed here, we're looking at home prices in the range of $300,000. What percentage of the Athens workforce can afford a $300,000 home? If it's exceedingly small, is that really workforce housing? And even if they could afford it, is there really a shortage of that price housing in Athens? Three hundred and, sorry, of the 582 properties currently listed for sale on Zillow, 390 of them are under the $300,000 price tag, including four in the very neighborhood that we're discussing. It seems to me there are plenty of available opportunities for those who can afford housing in this price range. Additionally, the developer says that this will create community. How does an inward-facing cul-de-sac create community for anyone outside of that neighborhood? Is everyone in Normal Town invited to come hang out around the fire circle? Or will this create further separation between those rich enough to afford these homes and those who have been living and renting in the area for years? Along those same lines, the arguments from the neighbors who have come to the community and Planning Commission meetings to speak in favor of this proposal have primarily been focused on cleaning up Clover Street. How is a development that's not even on Clover Street going to help with that? Are they relying on the domino theory of gentrification? Is the hope to just keep pushing people out from street after street until every block in the neighborhood is filled with affluent inhabitants? Increasing building density should be about providing housing opportunities for people who currently have none. It should be about increasing the diversity and inclusion of a neighborhood rather than creating further homogenization and concentration of affluency. Why change zoning development to protect the neighborhood that, why change zoning designed to protect the neighborhood and give additional waivers beyond those zoning changes when those changes will only benefit those who least need the hand up? If this was actually going to help average people attain a comfortable home in Athens core, instead of pushing them further to the outskirts, it would be a lot more palatable to me as someone who lives in the neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell. Any other input on item number 11?
Hey, I'm Matt Tingle. I live on, at 155 Edwards Circle in the neighborhood, and I'm the quote-unquote developer. So, this is my project and what I'm really excited in. I've lived in the neighborhood for 10 years. My wife and I got married and moved into a house on this land where we're hoping to do this project now. It is my firm belief that this project fits in our neighborhood and fits with the tenor and the spirit of the residents that I know and that I interact with there. It's taken me a year and a half to get to this point here of officially, a year and a half of going through this process, and I have really enjoyed talking to my neighbors. I enjoy meeting them and talking to my neighbors, anyway, so this was no different than what we normally do. But this project fits, as far as I know. We've done what we can to increase accessibility, and I have taken input from those who wish to give it, and I've made myself available to those, to everyone in the neighborhood to give me input. And as Bob mentioned, they have made it better. We've made changes based on the input we received. So, I would like to make myself available to answer questions to y'all if you would like to ask me some as you discuss, but I would ask for your vote for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tingle. Anyone else interested in commenting on item number 11? All right, this is in District 3. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, first of all, I want to commend the developers for doing that public outreach. They've had several meetings, and, you know, I feel like there are a lot of folks in the community who are really excited about this project. I've heard from quite a few of them. I just want to state that I don't have a problem with this upzoning. In fact, I believe in these in-town neighborhoods, which this was considered the suburbs when it was built 50, 60 years ago, but it's not anymore. This is definitely in-town. You know, and if we're going to get real about our housing needs in this community, we're going to have to do upzoning here and there, and we're going to have to go into these RS neighborhoods and find pockets where we can add a little density without negatively impacting the surrounding neighborhood. And I really believe this is one way to do it. You know, these cottage courts work in other places throughout the country, you know, and they're actually quite traditional. In a lot of ways, we do have some historic cottage courts. If you look at Addyville off of Barber Street, and if you look at our older neighborhoods that are also some of our most in-demand neighborhoods, places like Five Points and Cobham and Boulevard, you do have these pockets of density. You have, you know, apartment buildings scattered in among single-family homes of many different sizes. So, I really feel like this is just harkening back to a development pattern that has kind of always existed. So, I'm very much in support of it, and the idea that by building new housing in this kind of middle price range, you're relieving pressure from some of the existing older homes that can be in a more affordable price range. You have people out there who have $300,000 to spend. They're either going to spend it on a brand-new $300,000 home in a project like this, or they're going to spend it on a $200,000 home and bust it out and turn it into a $300,000 home. So, there is a way to affect affordable housing by building new housing for that income bracket that can afford $300,000. So, you know, there's many tools in the toolbox to solve our housing crisis, and this is one of them, and I feel like this fits really well, and I also believe that it is very pedestrian-friendly. This neighborhood is very much in demand because you can walk to some really desirable amenities. I used to live right around the corner on Best Drive, and it's just a short walk to Normal Town, where you have multiple restaurants and bars and little grocery store, liquor store. So, you know, the access to Hawthorne, you know, the developer doesn't have the power of eminent domain to bust in there and get that full-on right-of-way. But I really feel like, you know, folks who are moving to this neighborhood are eager to access Normal Town, and I do hope that that activity in this neighborhood will spur some activity on Hawthorne, too. I feel like there's a lot of opportunity on that corridor, and, you know, the idea of having that future pedestrian access opportunity and, you know, allowing that kind of access in future development in the area can help spur that development. So, I just want to propose that we accept this plan.
Direct to votes with this?
Okay, so, change the land use. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and propose that we change the future development map.
Second?
Second.
All right, so I've got a motion, a second, and we've got some input from Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, I really appreciate the two speakers coming up and Allison Smith getting 10 minutes to fill us in, because that was a lot of information to absorb, and I want to, it spurred me off to a question that Brad maybe can fill me in on. With staff denying these, but the Planning Commission approved them, I got to that part, but I guess I sort of missed this whole discussion about the pedestrian easement. Was that not really an official part of this? I see it in sort of the packet, but not the discussion, the connectivity.
There is a gap, there's a connection that is on property also owned by the applicant, but not part of the PD, so we really can't get into conditioning a PD to an off-site restriction on a piece of property not otherwise involved, but it is a commitment from the owner to do that, which still leaves the one gap immediately to the left of the property that they do not control. But it was written into their report.
Right.
It was their intention to do it.
Okay, so I see that, and of course, that's not something that we can be held to. Can you speak to, did Planning Commission, I guess, just jump over that since it wasn't in the preview, because it wasn't connected, that wasn't part of the Planning Commission's discussion?
I don't recall them having a lot of discussion, other than really kind of what we've just said here, that they liked the idea, but they understand it's limited in terms of its ability to be part of the PD.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Other Commissioner input? Commissioner Denson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, I also have to appreciate the amount of accessibility that the developers made themselves through this process, holding multiple community meetings in the Normal Town area for this, and utilizing listservs to get the plans out there and to gather input, definitely going further than I think, you know, many developers go in these kind of situations. And I do hope that we can get this pedestrian access going through. Actually, I lived on 425 Clover Street for many years, and I found that access anyways, a path to desirability, to get to Hawthorne, to catch the bus, and there's great need there, and I think it's also a way that we could actually really kind of revolutionize Hawthorne Avenue there to make it its own little Normal Town, because this part of Normal Town is a little further away from the main strip on Prince. So, I think that's something that we should definitely, I hope this commission continues to pursue, and that we can get the other property owners on board for. I definitely understand the concerns. I heard from a lot of people who were for and against this. Change is scary and hard, I understand that, especially when it's happening around the corner from your home. But I do appreciate that the developer lives in this neighborhood, this is their home also, and that they're going to want the best that's there, and I do also hope and believe that this can increase the overall stock and, I agree, take off some of the pressure of some of the more affordable homes below this price point, too.
There's a motion and a second for the future development map change. An ordinance?
I'll go ahead and read both of them. The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the official future development map of Athens Clark County by changing the designation of three parcels of land totaling approximately 1.02 acres located at 413 Millard Avenue, 347 Sunset Drive, and part of 350 Hawthorne Avenue from traditional neighborhood and Main Street business to traditional neighborhood and for other purposes. The next is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning three parcels of land totaling approximately 1.02 acres located at 413 Millard Avenue, 347 Sunset Drive, and part of 350 Hawthorne Avenue from RS8 Single Family Residential and CG Commercial General to RS5 PD Single Family Residential Plan Development and for other purposes.
All right, so first motion was for the future development map. Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the rezoning.
I'll move that we rezone to the left of the PD.
All right, motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Denson for the rezoning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion approved.
I'm the only opposed.
Commissioner Thornton opposed. Please make sure you note that, Clerk Sprattland. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item... All right, we're moving on to item number 12, which is the request of Jim Warrens for the Episcopal Diocese of Atlanta for an amendment to a commercial neighborhood PD. Any citizen input on item number 12?
My name is Jim Warrens, and as the mayor pointed out, I represent the Episcopal Diocese of Atlanta. This is the Episcopal House project that was approved by the commission about a year ago, and the matter before the commission tonight is for a redesign of that project. The redesign would allow for 123 affordable dormitory beds and would allow for a staff person, a chaplain, to live on-site in the dormitory on a permanent basis. The prior approval was conditioned upon reaching an agreement with the University of Georgia. That has been done. That agreement's been signed, sealed, and delivered and recorded with the Clerk Superior Court. The current proposal for the just changes in design have recommendation by both staff and planning commission for approval. There were three conditions, and those conditions were set out that they be complied with before permitting be issued. However, the applicant has gone ahead and has complied with all three of those conditions. Two of them had to do with redrawing, some drawings just for consistency, and the third one was the form of the narrative report, which if this passes will become part of the permanent development plan, and that's been done, submitted, staff has reviewed it, and we got it in the shape that they wanted it to be in. So on the basis of that, I would ask you to approve this project.
Thank you, Mr. Warrens. Other input on item number 12?
My name is Clayton Harrington. I live at 101 Ashley Circle, and I am the chaplain at the Episcopal Center at UGA. I can't overemphasize how excited the Episcopal Church is to create the Episcopal House. In the past year, Episcopal student participation in our program and the demand for Episcopal housing has significantly increased. We expect that it will only continue to grow. We continue to believe that a quieter, more intentional academic and religious community in the Episcopal tradition is needed at UGA. We believe that the Episcopal House will be a way for students from many different walks of life to come together, to know one another, and to share in community. We are excited about the possibilities to facilitate and enhance community among students, and not just students who participate in the life of the Episcopal chapel or those who identify as Episcopalians. And we are very thankful that UGA has continued to support our plans. Our students are very excited about our plans to build a new community at the Episcopal House, and I'm excited, too, because I will be living there myself. As the resident chaplain, I will be available for students who need someone to speak with and to students who may be in crisis. This will provide additional care and support for students who live at the Episcopal House, adding another layer of support to help students thrive and succeed at UGA. At the Episcopal House, we will have a wide variety of programs which will be open to everyone, and this is why important changes to our previous proposal had to be made. We are also delighted to have been able to reduce parking and make the building more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Any other input on item number 12? All right, seeing none, this is in District 7. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, any other commission discussion?
I'll just say that I'm very excited about the parking reduction. I hope that we can kind of make some policy that easily allows those parking reductions in these urban areas.
Attorney Berman has an ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending a planned development for three parcels of land comprising approximately 1.130 acres located at 980, 984, and 994 South Lumpkin Street in the CNPD Commercial Neighborhood Plan Development District and for other purposes.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, a second from Commissioner Link. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, hearing none, we are going to move on to item number 13, which is a text amendment regarding preliminary plat staff conferences. Any citizen input on this exciting item? Seeing none, we'll come behind the rail for conversation or a motion.
It's such an exciting item. I will move to approve.
I am thrilled to second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Harrington, a second from Commissioner Wright. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've got a motion from Attorney Berman.
The code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to public notice for staff-permitted variances and preliminary plats for subdivisions of five or more lots and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. In that regard, the item we just heard, we have another text amendment, even more exciting, about type 1 and type 2 application withdrawal. Any public input on this one? I'm not dissuading you now.
No pressure.
All right, any commission conversation or a motion?
I'll just say, Mr. Mayor, that this has been needed. It's going to make things a little less complicated when someone wants to withdraw an application, so I'm going to support it.
All right, I agree. A motion from Commissioner Neesmith?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Denson. Attorney Berman, could you read the ordinance, please?
The code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to type 1 and type 2 application withdrawal and for other purposes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, now is the time in the evening when we have citizen input on any item not on the agenda. So as in previous opportunities, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light on Clerk Sprattlin's desk will turn yellow, and when your time is up, it turns red. So come on down. Feel free to line up if you'd like.
Hey, everybody. We ready? I'm waiting for the light. I'm Carrie Ritzler. I live at 325 Ann's Court, and I've been working on the 100% Athens Clean and Renewable Energy Initiative for the past year. It was just over a year ago that many of you participated in our Environmental Issues Town Hall and committed to a 100% clean and renewable future for Athens-Clark County. And so on behalf of the 100% Athens Steering Committee, I just want to thank you all for the support and for the conversations that you've engaged in with us. It's through that that you've, you know, continued demonstrating that commitment, so we're just really grateful for everyone's time and attention. Over the past several months, national and international reports have spelled out the need for bold, transformative, and coordinated action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions drastically over the coming decades. And as I've seen those reports, I have read them with concern, but also with the conviction that I live in a community with leaders who are prepared to act. So again, I'm very grateful for that. I want to share with you that as we've worked on the campaign, we've seen broad support from the Athens-Clark County community for the 100% Clean and Renewable Energy Resolution. So I want to present tonight some petitions that we have over, we have 82 residents that signed and 424 residents signed online, the petition supporting this resolution. And I also want to share with you a letter of support that we have signed by several nonprofit groups in Athens and around the state, including Athens for Everyone, Bike Athens, and Environment Georgia, and additionally, a letter of support from Spencer Frye, supporting the resolution. I also want to let the commission know about an opportunity coming up to raise our voices to advance and expand renewable energy options at the state level. The Public Service Commission, which is the regulatory body that sets rules and priorities for what kind of energy is available to Georgians, is currently in the process of negotiating with Georgia Power to develop their Integrated Resource Plan, which will set Georgia Power's energy delivery priorities for the coming years. The final day for public comment on that plan is next Monday, May 13th. So this is an opportunity for us in Athens to let the Public Service Commission and Georgia Power know that we are committed to renewable energy and that we would like to have their partnership in meeting our goal for 100% clean and renewable energy. So I hope that some of you on the commission will consider coming down to the PSC office next week to testify. So thank you very much. And I have documents to hand over.
Hand those to the attorney, he'll take care of us.
I'm sorry, some of these have coffee on them and stuff because they've been carried around on the footboards, but...
Thank you, Ms. Ritzler.
Good evening, Mayor and District Commissioners. My name is Nene Onyoha Clayton. I am also a member of the Athens 100% Athens Steering Committee, and I would like to talk to you today about equity wording in the resolution. 100% Athens Renewable Initiative would like to thank the mayor and commission for participating in the development of the 100% Clean Energy Resolution and your ongoing commitment to equity at every step of that transition. In our recommendations for this resolution's language, we included wording to guarantee that communities of color and other economically disadvantaged communities are prioritized in the initial rollout of the plan. We have specifically referred to these communities as communities of color and other economically disadvantaged residents, firstly, because we feel that it is important to be explicit in our terminology so as not to cause confusion over which communities we are prioritizing in this first phase of our plan. Secondly, it may be considered insufficient due diligence with respect to equity justice if we favor generic catch-all terms such as economically disadvantaged people, for example. According to, for example, according to 100% Athens Committee Member Carol Meyer's testimony, I quote, "At the Georgia Bike Summit last fall, there was an analysis done of the Bike Master Plan by Charles Brown, an African-American Rutgers professor and livability and community health advocate, who criticized the bike plan for not referring to race directly, using phrases like 'economically disadvantaged' instead of directly using the word 'race', 'black,' 'African-American,' etc." It is important, end quote, "It is important for us that the mayor and commission are aware of our initial recommendations and have the opportunity to deliberate on the possible inclusion of this specific language as you consider the 100% Clean and Renewable Energy Resolution. Looking towards the future, it is essential to the integrity of measures we take towards equity to have wording in the resolution that strongly protects the interests of communities of color. As you already know, we have a moral and civic duty to ensure that the most vulnerable communities are prepared at the earliest available opportunity in order for the transition to be, to clean energy to be as equitable and just as we have promised it would be. We therefore ask that the commission consider including language safeguarding that mandate to protect the most vulnerable first. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you, Nene.
Hi, my name is David Block. I live at 355 Idlewood Drive in District 1. I'm a retired neurologist, a retired physician, but I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen who unfortunately has had his own history of heart attack and stroke, and I know that unfortunately as well, each of us at one time or another is probably going to be looking up at the same kind of future. You know that these are time-sensitive, life-threatening emergencies. Their outcomes and their costs of care will be affected positively by two changes that the county is in a position to make. So first, I want to support the Athens-Clark County Police Department recommended option, it's option number three, to take over all dispatching in Athens-Clark County to include emergency medical calls. The research literature shows that this is an extremely effective way to get really cost-effective, time-effective, and medication, you know, clinically effective help to people when they need it. This is in line with the recommendations of the National Association of EMS Physicians, which is the national organization of docs who deal with emergencies out in the field before those folks actually get to the emergency room. Our local dispatching will save lives, it will cut costs, and it will also reduce legal liability because people will get to the ER, they'll be healthier, they'll be more in time for lifesaving medications, whether it's for stroke, whether it's for heart attack, or any of the other fatal conditions which unfortunately so many of us here in Athens, especially in my district, are subject to. Second, I want to support upgrading our first fire department response to that of the advanced life support or the paramedic level. This would bring cardiac monitoring and lifesaving medications much closer to my neighbors and to me. In District 1, we live so far away from the hospitals, more than 20 minutes, and are time of greatest need. Current studies look at time to treat as being crucial, not just at time for the ambulance to get there, but time to treat. So I believe that Chief Scarborough for our, in our fire department, is up to the task. I know that he's administered a similar program as Assistant Chief of the Sandy Springs Fire Department, and he did that, of course, before coming here, and we're lucky to have him. Every doc, in closing, every doc has a responsibility to public health, and so since I not only have that responsibility still in spite of being retired, I speak doubly as a patient and as a physician. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lock.
My name is Sam Raffel, 230 Spalding Circle. I'm here tonight to speak to the Athens-Clark County Police Department recommended option for public dispatch of all 911 calls. It was contained in the report we recently obtained, and we strongly support that recommendation, and we appreciate your support, those of you who are and will support that. This initiative will one day save lives. I hope people can begin to see the type of system we are dealing with and the lengths that people will go to maintain secrecy, like blocking this recommendation. This system seems to be afraid of transparency, and they will subvert the recommendations of our public safety professionals and put the community at risk to maintain complete control over their numbers and protect a business model that puts profit over public safety. I remain committed to fully implementing these recommendations of our Athens-Clark County Police Department Communication Center and to push for our first fire response to be that of the advanced life support or paramedic level. These two actions will increase accountability, enhance efficiency, and ultimately save lives. I know there are costs associated with these changes, but one thing that we're not calculating is the cost of saving a human life, and I do believe these actions will do that. I think it will take a strong position from our commission in support of option 3, the recommended option of the police department. It's also worth noting, and I will confirm this, but I'm pretty sure our new administrator at Piedmont Athens Regional Hospital came to us from Piedmont Newton County Hospital, where he recently negotiated a 50-year contract with the county, where the county would provide all 911 dispatching services and also provide some basing out of their fire stations in exchange for ambulance service at no cost. So I just thought I'd mention that also. I appreciate all of y'all's time and effort in this regard. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Raffel.
Hi, I'm Chris Dowd, 188 Northview Drive. So I guess I'm going to support my second staff recommended public safety improvement tonight. The first was the roundabout, and the second is the police department's recommended option to combine our 911 centers into one group so you don't have to say your emergency twice. I think it's really important, and I know the problem with this issue is that, you know, you just don't even know that, like, no one even knows that this is a thing until you have to deal with it, and then, you know, then you're dealing with delays and it's an emergency, right? So I think we should, we need to get out in front of this. And so thanks for telling me that it's not so much in the local government's hands at the moment, but I think that makes it even more important for all of us to, you know, to speak out publicly on this issue that this is important for our community and we need to get it done. this is important for our community and we need to get it done. And the second thing I wanted to talk about is fare-free bus service, my favorite topic. So, yeah, so, you know, the budget looks great to me. Thanks so much for including fare-free for seniors and city employees in the budget. That's great. It's really exciting. I do think that we, for next year's budget, I think we need to consider how we're going to approach, you know, transitioning to a fully fare-free system for everyone. And so I think we need a fare-free trial period is what I guess I would recommend, like a month or two, three, if we can pull it, swing it. Next year, maybe in October, November, I think would be a good time. Help people get to the polls, for example, and have a good trial period when the traffic is heaviest, I think, in the fall. So, just because there are, and I don't talk about this often, of course, because I'm an advocate for fare-free transit, but there are, you know, potential issues that could crop up, you know, switching to fare-free, for example, if it's very, very popular, maybe certain routes, there's too many people trying to get on the bus. And so we might have to get more buses. And so we need to know, like, what, how it will impact the system. And so I do think we need to do a trial period, give it a few months and see what happens, and then we'll know going forward what we're looking at. Because what we don't want is for the people right now who aren't paying, like, they're willing to pay. They ride the bus every day and they pay. And what they don't want is, like, not to be able to board the bus because there's so many people on it, you know? So obviously, it's a good thing in some ways, but it causes problems in other ways. And we don't want people paying right now to not like fare-free and have to reverse it later. That'd be terrible. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
My name is Dennis Holmes, and I reside in 1965 Wannaville Road Lot Two. I'm here this evening to dwell on the fact that, the accusations that I brought against Athens Clark County. I sent each and every last one of y'all commissioners a letter. You neglected to even respond to the letter. No way, none whatsoever. I mean, what is expected? What do I have to do to try to make any type of contact with y'all? But hey, but it done on me. It done. I was up in here about a month ago, and I heard this lady, she came up here and she said, that, now it was a guy. It wasn't a lady, excuse me. It was a guy. He said he had did a survey out there at the Athens Clark County Jail. He said he seen 19 individuals coming at jail, but 16 almost African-American. I'm trying to make a point here. It just goes to show, regardless of whatever anybody may say, the racism that exists here in this county is enormous. It really is. Hey, and it's so obvious. Hey, now, it's hard, it's hard for me to sit up here and say these type of things because, hey, up until recently, I didn't knew what racism was, up until recently. But in the last four or five years, hey, I've had so much contact with it, it's regardless, to where people have actually called me the N-word, did everything to me that could possibly be done, playing with my mind, inflicting so much pain and suffering upon me that I can't even start to recount. Hey, I just, I'm in a situation now where I'm being forced to go through life on a day-to-day basis, day-to-day. Now, I'm not, I'm not the type of, like I, like I've been telling y'all, every time I come up here, I don't bring false accusations against anyone. I, no, hey, that's something I never do. But you best believe, if I accuse somebody or something, it's something that needs to be looked into. Now, hey, now, this is something that's been going on. This is my 24th year.
Mr. Holmes, I appreciate you coming to visit with us tonight. Thank you much.
I have, my three minutes is not over.
Light's red.
So that's how y'all do it. That's how you do it. I just said, the racism does exist. Hey, but I got a meeting with you next Monday. That's something we have definitely talked about. And, hey, and at $4.5 million, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not going anywhere. Y'all gonna pay me for the damage y'all done did. Y'all gonna pay me. I'm not going anywhere.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Broderick Flanagan, 215 Gressman Street. Wanted to just really quickly thank the people who showed up on March 31st to the Dr. Bellamy Lunch and discussion about equity and what equity can look like in a community. We brought Dr. Bellamy here because he did some great work in Charlottesville, Virginia. He's a part of the city council there. And what he did was, for the commissioners that did not show up to the meeting, and thank you, manager, for showing up, and mayor, you as well, but for the commissioners that weren't there, Dr. Bellamy was able to go through the city's budget and find about $4 million to start some equity work. So he allocated money for, towards things like, you know, GED programs for people in public housing, for people living below the AMI to have local scholarships for their youth. He created, you know, Youth Mail Achievement Position, as well as doing stuff for housing. And I think from that conversation that we had on that day at the Fire Hall, we learned a lot about what equity could look like and how to use leverage and how to partner with other organizations to do that work. There are several organizations here in this community that are dedicated to doing that work, that have been doing that work. You know, I appreciate us showing up for the conversation, but let's put some action behind that. And let's really get some serious resources to certain organizations like East Athens Developments Corporation, Northeast Georgia Business Alliance, and Economic Justice Coalition, who have been on the ground doing a lot of this work here in Athens for years. So I just wanted to come and express that here this evening and to really to encourage some of the commissioners that weren't there at that meeting to look up Dr. Bellamy's work and to pay attention to some of the things he was able to accomplish there, so we can start doing some of that work here in Athens. I'm excited about the work that the possible Office of Diversity and Inclusion can be doing. I think that's, there's great potential there. And I'm seeing a little bit of glimpses in your budget proposal, but let's, let's make it more robust and let's do some, some serious resource allocation to these neighborhoods, to these marginalized communities, which include the black community, which include the Latinx community. Thank you.
Thank you, Broderick.
Hi, I'm Alan Jones. I live at both 140 Red Fox Run and 195 Xavier Drive here in Athens. And I'm not the first person to bring this up, but I want to once again bring up speaking about the speed limit on Timothy Road. Once upon a time, Timothy was a sleepy little road. Then about, I think about 10 years ago, someone got the great idea to take this big old highway that comes up from Florida and connect it right into it, and think that if we could put up a few signs that said, "No trucks," that it would still remain a sleepy little neighborhood road without much impacted traffic. It has impacted traffic quite a bit. Timothy Road has become Timothy Highway, Timothy Freeway, Timothy US 441, the Oconee County Connection to the Mall, whatever you want to call it. My section of Timothy Road, just between the Loop and Epps Bridge, has 20 subdivisions, three churches, and 35 individual driveways. It is residential. According to the ACC Traffic Study of this March, in the past five years, there have been 549 reported crashes on Timothy. That's over twice as many as reported for comparable roads at 252. The total injury crashes are at 163, again, double that of comparable roads at 75. Both these crash rates have been rated at above critical. I'd imagine that most of these accidents are rear-end collisions when somebody is trying to turn into a subdivision. I'd also imagine that a number of smaller fender benders have gone unreported, probably also double that of similar roads. All these accidents could be greatly reduced by simply reducing the speed limit from 45 to 35 miles per hour. I've seen this recommended in ACC-funded transportation studies from back in 2004. I know there's your 80% rule, but that makes very little sense to be used as a guideline when lives are at stake. The speed limit needs to change. A residential road that has twice the accidents of comparable roads, don't you think that needs some attention? The residents of our corridor recently had an initial gathering of Talk Timothy with Commissioner Hamby, Chief Spruill, and Drew Raisler. We had 90-ish people show up. Any of the speakers can tell you of the desperation that we heard in the voices of many of the citizens in attendance, pleading for something to be done to make the corridor safer. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Hello, my name is Laura Yen. I live at 180 River Oak Way. And I'm here to talk about the safety issue on Riverbend Parkway. I know this has come up before, and I know people have talked about it, but the particular issue that I'm concerned about is, would cost the county nothing, and it would greatly enhance the safety of all the walkers and bicycles that use Riverbend Parkway. It's mostly students. It's very heavily trafficked. They have put in a bike passenger lane, but if you drive on that road, you see that there's a great many cars that pay no attention to that, that the pedestrian lane gets driven in all the time. I followed a car that drove the entire way on that pedestrian lane. The particular issue that I would like to address is the buses. There is no reason that the buses need to cross into the pedestrian lane to drop off traffic. What that does is it, they pull over, they let the, mostly students come out. And although they should cross behind the bus, most of them cross in front of the bus. There are a lot of people that, especially young people, that do not slow down for the bus. It's not the law because it's a city bus or a university bus. And so they go just tearing past the bus. What happens is these kids come walking out the front, and you don't see them until they are right there. We had a man, I think you all know, that was killed on that road, probably by somebody coming out from one of the student departments, not looking and going right into the bike lane and hit this poor man. But if the buses stopped in the road, they would, yes, they would hold up traffic for what, a minute while whoever's coming out or getting on, cross the road, and then they move on, and then the car would follow them. There are two bus stops going into the, into the, into River Oaks, and three coming out. So it's not like there's a lot of bus stops. There are not a lot of buses that use them. Anybody who can't wait two minutes for people to, for the safety of the students, the other thing that happens is when the buses pull over and they let students out or let people out, then they have to pull back into traffic. And if you've got somebody who's speeding by, there is always the chance that the bus will not see the car. And they'll just be pulling back in like they're supposed to do. Somebody's trying to race around to beat the bus, and there could easily be an accident. As far as I know, there has not been one yet, but it's just an accident waiting to happen. I think this would cost the city nothing. All they would have to do is change the place where the bus stops. That's my.
Ma'am, thank you for coming down tonight. Could you repeat your last name for me?
Yen, Y-E-N.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other public input this evening? Hearing none, we're going to move behind the rail and have input from constitutional elected officers. I'm going to begin with one charge that's going to be to the Planning Commission for Inclusionary Development. As we know, we have additional funding sources coming online to support mixed-income housing, and so we need some code sections and language and processes that will be corollary supports to that. And so I'm asking the Planning Commission to develop policies and practices that will encourage mixed-income development across zones, allowing for single-family and multifamily residential units. And this should include examination of current impediments to site development and related solutions that provide the underlying framework for residential development, things such as the grading schedule, road interconnectivity, application of single-family height restrictions in greenfield development, minimum lot and home sizes, development of accessory dwelling units on owner-occupied lots and others, while maintaining strong environmental protections. They should also examine byright density increases for inclusion of permanently affordable units while maintaining appropriate setbacks and buffers to support existing development. Should look at public infrastructure cost participation with inclusion of affordable units, along with identified sources of funding such as SPOS, tax allocation districts, and others, and look at a partnership framework with local affordable housing providers to ensure permanent or long-term status of affordable units. And the Planning Commission, potentially including designation of a subcommittee or through joint work sessions with the mayor and commission, shall work with staff to explore examples from peer communities, seek input from development professionals and affordability advocates, and present draft ordinance language to us by November 2020. So that is a big, hefty load of work that is going to be underway, first on the planning staff and commission side, and then coming to us next year. I'm going to move on to receive any reports from the manager. Anything tonight, Mr. Williams?
No, sir.
Anything from the attorney?
Nothing, thanks.
All right. And we're going to go ahead and move around the room. We'll start with Commissioner Neesmith and then with Commissioner Dentson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Chief Spruill and his command staff for coming out to Cleveland Road Elementary School last night and meeting with the community. I was, I was very impressed by Chief Spruill. He gave, some of you have seen his presentation. He talks about his background. He talks about his goals. He talks about what he thinks the Athens Police Force should be and how to do it. His command staff was smiling the whole time. And I just want to thank him and the command staff and let him know that I think this commission, he has our full support in making his goals a reality.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the speakers tonight who came at the end with public comment. I, I would like to know how we can move forward with consolidating the 911 calls. This has been an issue for a long time, and I understand Piedmont Regional and St. Mary's have something to do with the contract for 911 services, but as Mr. Mayor has led us through the budget and allocated funds for an extra 911 operator, perhaps we can begin the preparation to put in a bid as the municipality to take over those 911 services. I'd like to thank the resident from River Oak who came in. I'm sure y'all also saw the agenda comment forums. We've heard from seven other residents in this neighborhood. There was a resident at the last meeting as well. There was a gentleman that was struck and killed walking down Riverbend Parkway. So I've been working with the manager, Drew Raisler, and we've come up with a solution to create a physical barrier between the bicycle lane and the vehicular travel lane to provide some protection for folks that are utilizing that bicycle lane for either walking or biking. And it's basically a half-dome bollard that will be embedded in the actual stripe of the lane to provide some degree of protection for folks that use that lane. I'd like this to serve, perhaps, as a model moving forward that we, we really need to prioritize how we can create separate facilities, separated facilities with physical protection for other users because, you know, protection for other users, because, you know, all it takes is, is one lapse in concentration for a vehicle to travel into a bicycle lane or, or some other area at grade to do grievous harm to our citizens. So, uh, let's push for that. We, we hear every single meeting, uh, people concerned with traffic and speed and, and vehicles moving too fast through our neighborhoods. Let's, let's get working on it. And I look forward to working with my colleagues to hopefully, uh, get these bollards installed, uh, through this budget cycle. It's, it's estimated $50,000, so a pretty modest amount to, uh, provide some protection where, where we've had two, actually two pedestrian deaths in, in the past ten years, one, one most recently. So, thank you.
Commissioner Harrod?
Commissioner Thornton?
I also want to, um, thank the, uh, speakers tonight. I, I try to listen intently. I want to thank, um, or I'll let them put this way, I really enjoyed the, um, Athens Clark County Employee Day at Sandy Creek. The highlight of my day was smashing a pie in our city manager's face. So that was, that was cool.
Is that the highlight of his day?
That was the highlight of his day, too. Um, I also want to acknowledge, um, Sunday at First Presbyterian Church, they have a special service every year, and, um, to really encourage and, uh, pray for elected officials from a state house folk, to school board folk, and everybody in between. I think the message was very, very, um, appealing to me and very helpful, and I got to see, um, Jerry's knees and legs with his kilt on. So that was, that was pretty cool.
Mariah just threw up.
(laughing) I did, too. I ran, I ran to the bathroom real quick. Um, I had, I had, uh, a dinner and dialogue with some of the members from the SPOS Committee, uh, last Friday, and I mean, I'm going to send you some of the comments. I think there's things that we can do to, um, and, um, I just think there's some things that we could do. There were some comments and some concerns and, and suggestions. It wasn't all critical, so it was a good, um, dinner meeting. I also attended, uh, Chief Spruill's events, um, in District One and Five. I would have made it to yours, but we were a budget meeting, and he is really reaching out, and I think this past weekend, he did the, um...
Hops and barbers?
Cops and...
Barbers.
Cops and bar- barbers, I think it was in the front pa- paper, so I think we, I think he's really trying to get out in the community, and I think as commissioners, we should, um, um, support him. I don't know when he's coming to District Nine, but we're looking forward to it. Now, this part is not one of my happiest moments. I, uh, you know Bethel Holmes is in my district, and I was over there last night, and I know there's a whole bunch of rumors going around. I know there's a whole bunch of issues around, surrounding Bethel Holmes, but Bethel Holmes right now is terrible. It is worse than it has ever been, and, um, I don't know what we as the commission should do, but I don't think we can sit around here and wait till we have another shooting over there. We've had three, and nobody on this commission has even talked about it. Um, and it bothers me because those folk are, are in, in, in a place where they don't feel like they're getting any help. So that's my negative. Let me keep on moving to the positive. Uh, Friday, Patrick and I will be giving out, uh, food at Rayma Church through EJC on Daniels, uh, Road. If anybody wants to come out and help, it's three to five. Of course, it's District Nine, the best district around the group, and, um, that is pretty much that, um, and I've attended two of the, um, Accountability Court graduations. I think when we're talking about economic, um, um, criminal justice reform, we really need to highlight the good things that are going on. I heard some real emotional testimony. We don't get to hear that. We always hear the negative about our judicial system, but there are some people that have gotten caught up but are doing better. So that's me in a nutshell, and, um, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Commissioner Hamby?
Thank you, Mayor. So I wasn't at the employee appreciation thing to s- I certainly appreciate the employees. I'm sorry I wasn't there, but I missed, well, I missed, I'm hoping to, we, maybe we can bring a pie and you can repeat the episode there.[1342.13][1342.13](laughing) And I wasn't at the church on Sunday before you saw Jerry Neesmith's knees, and I certainly don't care to see that, so, but, uh, I, uh, appreciate, appreciate these opportunities for us to get out in the community like this. Um, we had a speaker here tonight from Timothy Road, and I just, and he knows, and others on Timothy, I'd like to know is that come July, June, July, based on information from the mayor and county manager, that we will be discussing, or have the opportunity to discuss the, the speed limit on Timothy and other, other ways that we can help slow traffic down on Timothy. So, um, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Davenport?
So I have, I, I don't know why this is still on my mind, but, um, I would like to thank Jean Spratlin. She actually made food for us when we had the BAC. Um, and for some reason, those sandwiches still stay in my mind, so, um, I would just like to congratulate you and thank you for, thank you to us commissioners, having that long, long day through the process for providing us food. Um, I would like for the LRC to look at the permitting process, um, the length of permits, renewing of permits, denying of permits. There's just some issues about people getting a permit, not completing the job, and then continuing to apply for a permit. There's no, there's no process in place for denying, well, essentially stopping or denying a, a, a project that's in place. Um, uh, ditto with Chief Spruill, District One, he had, uh, he came out, he did a great job, um, and I, I wholeheartedly support him, and I pride that the community does as well. Interesting news, fun, fun, fun. Marigold Festival this Saturday at 11:00, Marigold Festival in Winterville, fun, fun, fun. Um, so please come out, Winterville at Peter Park, it's gonna be awesome. Um, and some interesting news, um, District One, Dr. Maxine Esom and Pepsi Hawkins Arnold have created a book called, um, it's all about the east side. It's called Across the River, The People and Places and Cultures of East Athens. Um, it should be available mid-May, uh, if you're interested in, uh, an advance copy. Um, it's sixty, it's fifty-five bucks, I believe, um, they are available, just ask me if you're interested. So, all about the east side, Dr. Maxine Esom and Pepsi Hawkins Arnold, look for the book, Across the River, The People and Places and Culture of East Athens, and I would like to look into the legal and the maybe possible resolution for, uh, 911 handling all of our dispatch as well, and ditto's for Travis Callman and Timothy Road, for Ann Riverbend Road, and that's it.
Commissioner Parker?
Um, I don't have much to add other than, um, to state my intention to create a discussion around the original language of the Hundred Percent Athens Proposal versus the language that's been proposed by staff. I think that as the speakers who came tonight noted, um, it's really important for us to honor, like, the legacy of who has been left out by naming those groups really succinctly and specifically when we try to tackle issues of equity, because I know that folks like get worried about who may be left out now when we name those groups, but at the end of the day, we have to be really, really intentional on who we are, um, trying to help. So, um, that's something that I hope, I look forward to having this conversation with you all, with, when that comes up for vote.
Commissioner Lake?
Um, yeah, first of all, I want to reiterate the concerns about speeding. Obviously, it's pervasive throughout our community, and, um, I hope that we can, um, revisit some policy so we can tackle it. I know our hands are kind of tied on some roads because the state law or state policy will not allow us to reduce speed limits without losing our radar permits, but, um, I hope that we can get creative and figure out what we can do. We certainly do have control on, on our neighborhood streets where we're not allowed to run radar anyways, um, so I look forward to that conversation moving forward. Um, I also want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to everybody behind the rail. I've been, um, the last time I was behind this rail, I was preparing to go into, um, major surgery the next day. I had a colon cancer diagnosis, and, um, I want to thank everybody who's reached out, um, all the kind words and the prayers and the support and the good vibes. They got it all, and my prognosis is excellent, and I feel very, very grateful, very blessed. And I just want to tell everyone out there, please, please get your colonoscopies.
Commissioner Wright?
Uh, I can't top that. Pass.
Commissioner Denson?
Um, yeah, so just, uh, first of all, I just thank everybody who came up and spoke again, um, and gave us your time. We appreciate that. Um, I'll also, uh, yeah, just definitely, I went to the, the May Day employee appreciation picnic held on International Workers' Day, exciting time to have it, and it wa- I was impressed, had great ability to spend time with our workers and see how much they enjoyed it, and it was a fantastic event, and I hope that we continue to budget that going forward. Um, on the 911 service stuff, I also want us to go a little bit further into it and find out, because I know that the state, I mean, authorizes the county to provide EMS service. I understand right now the contract might be through the hospitals, but the county is authorized to provide that service, so I'd like to figure out a little bit more about what leverage we have and how we can change that and make it better. Um, and the last thing I want to, uh, touch on is, uh, as many of y'all know, non-discrim- non-discrimination ordinances have been passed in a few cities here in Georgia. Atlanta's had one for a while, but now we can add Chambly, Doraville, and Clarkston to the list in the last year, and I would like to add Athens, Georgia to that list. Um, I think it'd be perfect timing for us to be able to have, uh, an actual non-discrimination ordinance in place for when the, the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, uh, comes online this summer. Um, and the reason it's needed is because Georgia has no non-discrimination, uh, legislation at all. State does not. So there's a lot of people who are not protected, actually. I think a lot of people here in Athens think that we protect, uh, a lot of, a lot of individuals, but they are not protected from a lot of discrimination, and, uh, if the state's not gonna do it, I think it's the responsibility for Athens Clark County to step up and do it for our residents, our citizens. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right, uh, I would accept a motion to move out of public session into executive session.
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Wright?
Second, somebody?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, everybody, thanks for joining us. Thanks for coming down tonight.
Yeah, that was all.